Yes, sir.
Good deal.
And we're live whenever you are ready.
All right. It's August 19th, 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting in order. Now, let's go ahead and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got everybody here tonight, so we have a full council. We have Quorum. Is there any changes here to the regular agenda?
No changes.
Okay, I'll look for a motion for approval of the regular agenda. Motion to approve. Okay, I'll look for a second. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We got consent agenda is number four. Has everybody had a chance to look through the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how often does the cleaning service come in a month?
It's twice a week. It's twice a week, I believe.
One day a week.
Yeah.
What exactly are they like dusting or like what is their main focus when they're cleaning?
Just overall, general, like I was getting in the city hall there, so they go and clean the bathrooms, take out trash, do some dusting, I believe, and if there's other concerns we have, we bring it up to them, but vacuum.
Is that like an hourly rate that you pay or is it go by days or hourly?
I'd have to look at the agreement. I believe it's hourly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
I did check in with the Horace Hawks Booster Club, asked Tracy Seeley some questions about it, just to make sure that it is legit and valid, make sure they had a 501(c)(3) and that all of the money that was collected does actually go back to the students and the activities that the students participate in. So that was confirmed before the meeting started tonight. I do ask that for these kind of special permits and stuff like that, that they actually get the permit before they start advertising it. I noticed this has been being advertised at least for a week now prior to this meeting. Other than that, I have no other questions for this consent agenda. Anyone else? Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Do I got a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Number five is the approve the city council meeting minutes from August 5th. Has everybody had a chance to read through the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the minutes? No. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 meeting.
Okay, I'll look for a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear you. Motion carries. All right, so for public comment tonight, does anybody have any public comments they want to talk about? Once, twice? Okay. For the sheriff's update. Should all speak. It's been a while since we saw you.
Yeah, I figured I should also, you know, I'm alive. So yeah, it's been a summer for me, just to kind of say why I haven't been here for a little while. Earlier this summer, I was awarded at the Vision Zero Conference for Beyond the Traffic Stop Award, so I took up some of my time there at the conference. I've also participated in training this summer to include, I'm now a certified SFST instructor, so standardized field sobriety testing, and then I got certified in MOI, which is methods of instructing, so I can teach post-accredited classes through the sheriff's office. So other deputies will get credit towards their post licenses. And then just recently, I was also honored at the Red Hawks game for Vision Zero DUI All-Stars. So that's what I've been up to this summer.
Congratulations, Mr. Keller. Big accomplishments.
So I have tried to stay in the loop with Horace happenings as much as possible, but obviously my two counterparts, I think, are more than equipped to do that as well, so I felt comfortable, so to speak, letting them kind of take the reins for the last few months. But wanted to stop by tonight now that I had a few minutes. In reviewing the report, there is an uptick in just general disturbances, traffic complaints, kind of the general stuff we see throughout the summer. I haven't seen anything that really drew, has drawn my attention to it. I've, with calls, spent a substantial amount of time over the last month and a half outside of Horace, just with shootings and everything else that I've been involved in, so I haven't seen anything. Carson, have you seen anything of concerns?
Not me, really, no.
So I've been seeing and keeping up on the emails with Greyhawk, so we've been making that a point of emphasis for traffic control.
Have you guys been getting emails from the residents?
Carson just forwarded one today that he got to me.
That's the first one I've gotten from this.
Yep, so just the ones that I know of so far.
Did they reach out to you requesting extra patrol on the first day of school?
Yep, yep, and the mayor had emailed us requesting that as well, so I'm on nights, so I'm assuming Carson will try his best to get up there and do that kind of stuff, so.
We appreciate it.
And Noonan, so.
And Noonan said he was going to go up there.
Yep, yep, I'm sure he will too. Noonan's a great asset for Horace as well, so I think he does a great job as well. So yeah, as far as that goes, I don't see anything that really jumps out at me personally, so. Anybody have any questions for me from either the council or citizens?
Do you guys get a lot of complaints about the safety cones on County Road 14?
I don't know. I haven't really received many calls, but I do know I spent like 45 minutes one night picking up the center lane that was knocked over from 57th all the way to County 17. So that was fun. That was a little while ago. I talked to one of our reserve deputies, actually works for Dakota Fence and is in charge of kind of the safety, and it sounded like they got pulled off of that because of the 52nd Avenue Roundabout Project. Coming into town tonight, it does look like they're finally working over there again, so hopefully.
The lines aren't exactly straight.
No, no, and I can make a, I can text that our reserve deputy who works for him and see if they can get out there and adjust a little too. But yeah, it's definitely a pain. I've personally been very, using my discretion as far as people speeding in the construction zone right now, when there's not really anything going on, so. But so, but now there's work going on again there, so just be mindful that when there's workers present, that's kind of a different story. We got to keep them safe too, so. Otherwise, I did have a complaint the other night. I did text, or last night, and I texted Adam with the city, that one of the citizens up off of 64th and 66th was complaining about AD watering pump that had been running all weekend. He asked if it was necessary to run in, at night, and I said probably, but I said I would bring up that concern. He claimed he could hear it from his house. It was bothering them, so.
Jimmy, you want to take that one?
Another day or so, it'll be done. It's for the 65th Avenue Water and Sewer.
I understand.
So.
I just, there is a reason why it's running all night.
Yes.
Yes.
You lose ground overnight if you don't just continually keep pumping it, so. It's, it's not right on 66th, it's down the ways and then it's kind of lowered in the ground, but.
Is it intersecting the sand vein or is it to the east of the sand vein?
It's pretty, it's kind of right where the sand vein is, where it starts.
And I, you know, he questioned about the noise ordinance. I said, yes, there is one, but if there's essential things that are happening to help further construction, I don't know if there's much we can do about it, so, and that's what I.
Is it that noisy?
I didn't think so, but.
Well, it's told from staff.
You said the pump is down in like a depression hole or something?
Yes.
So it's not like it's, it's reflecting noise, it's not, okay.
I personally couldn't hear from the residents, but.
It was the one east of 66th, or west of 66th, right?
East, or the pump is west, yes.
Pump is west, okay, I want to make sure because there's people working on both sides of 66th.
Yeah, the residence was east of 66th.
What our staff indicated, they said it was, they referred to it like a whisper pump. So they said it wasn't any louder from their interpretation than like their truck idling, but.
Yeah, it's a diesel pump and it was like idling.
Yeah. But from that distance, it probably wasn't really that loud, but I don't know.
I, I don't know either. I just relaying it.
Yeah, we have folks that are used to hearing absolutely nothing up there, so any noise is going to be noticeable to them.
Other than that, I haven't had any complaints for construction stuff, really. Seems to be going as smoothly as it can. Seems like people might be adjusting to the chaos a little bit, so hopefully. Doesn't seem to be slowing down anytime soon. That's all I have.
Have you received any updates on 52nd?
I heard by the end of the month that the roundabout is supposed to be open.
We've all heard the same thing, okay. Just curious if you had any additional information.
Sooner the better, which again will, I believe, significantly reduce traffic in Greyhawk once that's open again, so. It's not a real convenient route to take going through Greyhawk, so I feel pretty strongly once 52nd, 64th gets back open, that'll really relieve a lot of that traffic up there, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And then we will hang out for a little bit, but we do have a patrol meeting to get to at 7:00 again tonight, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Congratulations again on your accomplishments. Thank you.
All right, number eight. Number eight is Lucas or is it going to be you or Lucas?
Lucas said he'll touch base on it. I could expand here. Either Jim or I could expand if we need.
Go ahead, Lucas. I'll try to turn my volume.
Take this one. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, apologies for not being there tonight. It is my wife's birthday and I just got done making a steak dinner, so I will run through this and relatively straightforward parking ordinance changes, try to update the ordinance to get more consistency with neighboring municipalities, and then also to address just some issues that Horace has seen in recent years. We're just making amendments to address those items. So this ordinance was, I believe, included in the packet that you guys got. I'm sure you all went through it, but Section 1 of this ordinance just adds that you can't park on a multi-use path, which seems like common sense, but now it's in the ordinance just to make sure. And then we also included in subsections 15 and 16 additional places in which you cannot park within 15 feet of a US Postal Service mailbox between hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Monday through Saturday. That's obviously so people don't interfere with mail carriers. And then within 100 feet of a half sack or otherwise assigned to the half sack. This was to address concerns from, I believe, Public Works or city staff with people having issues around turns, that you can't see oncoming parked cars. This is just a way to increase safety around half sacks. And then Section 2, this is where the consistency comes into play. The city of West Fargo has parking or permit parking for 72 hours or up to 72 hours. You can do that now in Horace, and then the ordinance says that in order to comply with this, you have to move your vehicle a minimum distance of 100 feet from its location within the 72-hour time period. And the Public Works Department will install signs on all street entrances to the city to notify the public of this restriction. The intent of that sentence is so the city does not have to sign every single street in the city. It's going to put the public on notice that when you enter the city of Horace, there's a 72-hour time period in which you can park your vehicle. And so I think Brent's just going to talk to the Sheriff's Department just to ensure that they are aware of this provision and that they aren't going to require the city to put up signs on every street in the city with the intent that this sentence covers the city, it covers that notice requirement. And then we just took out, the next sentence was struck out because it's just redundant. The first part of Section 13-1606 covers what it needs to in that, in the above section, the first part of it. And then Section 3, we added in regulations for electric vehicle stalls. It's only a matter of time before they start popping up in Horace, whether it's public or private. There's going to be electric vehicle stalls for people to, to park, plug in their vehicles, and this is just ensuring that those stalls are, regulations are followed by those using them as written under the Century Code. So really, it's just updating the city's ordinances to comply with state law. The $50 fine that's referenced in there is provided for under statute. Again, I don't know if Horace has any electric parking stalls yet, but I believe it's only a matter of time before businesses or the city installs those, installs electric parking spaces. And that's, that's it for this, this ordinance, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to provide updates to the city's parking ordinance, this isn't required to go before the planning measures because it's not under the Land Use Code. It's under a separate chapter, the city's ordinances, there's a separate title. So all it requires is two readings before the city council, and tonight would be the first reading of that ordinance that the council chooses to accept it.
Okay. Since I have the Sheriff's Department here, I'm going to ask them, is it enforceable?
Which part?
The day, the number of days, consecutive days.
So yeah, that's the one that was drawing concern going through it is because I feel North Dakota Century Code was pretty clear on that, but obviously there's got to be some way of Fargo and West Fargo's enforcing it, because I do know they have those ordinances. But I feel North Dakota Century Code is pretty clear, and it states that at the time and place of a local parking ordinance, a sign must be visibly, readily visible from a normally observant person, however it's worded. So yeah, I don't, I don't know how that applies or how it works, so that's something I'll bring up at our patrol meeting tonight and see if I can, we can do some research on our end on, on that. But that's how North Dakota Century Code is. We're, because all the parking regulations are 391049 and 391050. And that's where it says in one of those two about if it's not listed in Century Code and it's a local parking ordinance, the signage has to be visible, so. I'll have to do some researching in that. Maybe we can reach out to Fargo or West Fargo and see how they enforce it.
I think we modeled this after West Fargo, so.
We did.
I think that would make sense because I know they don't have every street signed.
Yep, no.
And they, they found a way to do it, so I'd be curious to care about that.
Yeah, we'll have to do some digging into that, so.
Okay.
To me, it seems reasonable that they're at every entrance into the city, but again, I just try to follow the law, make sure I'm doing it correctly, so.
And also in Section 1, 2, just one other quick question for you. I, I do get the rationale for the 100 feet of the half sacks. Do, do you see any concern with enforce, with enforcement there, or are other cities doing that?
Well, I feel like that would be kind of similar to what we're talking about if there's not signage.
So with that one though, that one will be signed?
Okay, yeah, if it's signed, then there's no issue.
But Lucas, I'm sorry, Lucas, would that require a sign on, on every half sack in the city?
That's the city's, that's the city's intent.
Yeah, and we could show you.
Just because it's not something that's, that's very common, it wouldn't be signed anywhere else. Like it's, when you're entering the city, it's obviously going to have those, those 72-hour parking signs up where the, the half sack isn't going, they're trying to sign that the city enters saying you can't park within 100 feet of a half sack. So the intent of the city staff is to put up signs, and the reason that we put Horace otherwise signs adjacent to a half sack, all will provide for 100 feet of space because of driveways. And so there may be instances where a sign is closer, so let's say 70 feet from the half sack, so it'll say no parking within 70 feet of it or between the signs essentially.
Again, I'm probably not opposed, but I'm just wondering, what are we talking for? I mean, we have a lot of half sacks in the city, don't we?
There's not a ton.
Or maybe there's more than I realized.
We have some, and Jim had their office actually put this together and show you where the receding behind and it's a little dark there. There we go. So what you can see, and Jim could explain this better than I can, but.
So this fun little animation here is a truck taking the corner of a half sack. And as you can see, when it starts out on the north side of the road, it has to hug the curb, the curb to make that corner. And if you can see that there's a little, there's a vehicle in there that's parked. If you look close enough, there's some line already typed in there. And you can see how when it comes around that corner, it either clips it and it still has to use some more of that other lane to make that corner. So that was, we'd use this animation to kind of determine 100 feet. And the 100 feet, like Lucas said, is going to try to land on a property line, so there's not a sign in someone's front yard and there's not a sign in someone's driveway. It's on a property typical to where we put street signs and fire hydrants.
And we may have the 100 feet be on their driveway, so then it would just be after, you know, after that or the next logical area, because you shouldn't be blocking driveway or very into a driveway either, so that gives us some flexibility to sign it.
Do other area cities have this same rule about half sacks?
I'm unaware if other ones have that, however, if you do look at like aerial images where you have the half sacks and you look at how tight the driveway is aligned, you likely wouldn't be able to legally park a vehicle on quite a few of these half sacks in our developments in the first place. So that, really, the curb, all per se, is the, within 100 feet. And like we were showing in this, it's more on the safety side, so you don't have, so vehicles can complete that turn moving completely. That was.
As far as a sheriff and safety standpoint, I, this makes sense, and I would agree with it, so.
How many do you think we have, Jim? I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just trying to get my head around signage costs and.
Oh, there's probably 30 of them. I'd say probably four in the subdivision, ten of them. That might be on the high side. Brad Hughes got four, Derek Gardens has four, Austin River has one, two, three, four. No, those are just three. So I'd say in that, and typically it would be signed with a no parking arrow this way, a no parking arrow that way. You know, between the two, so it'd be two signs.
And you can't park, if you're on that half sack where the image doesn't show the truck, you can't park between driveways on the street either with this?
Correct.
Which is, okay. Which doesn't seem to be a safety issue, but.
In cul-de-sacs, it's tough with the driveway, how close the driveways are to be able to fit a car there to park.
I, one question I had, I know it's in other cities. I didn't see it. I haven't had a chance to review this or see it. Is there anything as far as boulevard parking?
Yeah, in a different section. It's on our parking, but it is in a different section of the ordinance title. Three, I believe.
Aside all that, I've had some complaints about people parking up on boulevards and stuff, so.
You mean on or next?
Like on the grass.
Oh, on, oh. So we would do, if we pass it, we do a first reading tonight, then we just do a second reading? That's the procedure, Lucas, and then it's just, do we have to publish?
Uh, yeah, because there's a penalty section provided.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I mean, so the, the public would, would get to know that we're making this change. Are we just publishing the paper? Are we going to put it out in a, another fashion to?
I think the city puts ordinance updates on its website, but this will be published in the paper after it's approved.
Is that just driving? Yeah, but then there's also parking on a prohibited X.
No issue.
Anything?
No, I'm good.
Any questions?
Yeah, no, thanks for answering my questions. I just wanted some clarification on that, if you need to.
Okay, I will look for a motion to approve, and I hope you guys don't have a problem with it.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the parking ordinance amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion is seconded. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And I'll check on that stuff and get back to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, Southdale Farms addition. Looks like swimwater ponds.
So what we have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor and council, is Public Works has noticed there's some erosion around quite a few of the ponds actually in Horace, but Southdale Farms tends to get the brunt of it. There's a lot of water that comes out along County 117, and the ditches are just awfully flat, so the water tends to back up. As we build the shared use paths to the north, we're kind of channelizing that water a little bit more in a, in a in an actual channel to kind of try to keep that water in the ditch, but right now we're just having trouble with that. So Public Works had reached out to one contractor about the potential of adding some additional riprap and then filling in center of the erosion. There's a, there's an emergency outfall into the ditch that when you get the three, the four, plus in terrains, tends to kind of short circuit. So put a little more riprap in there and then fix some of the erosion on that. But Public Works had gotten, had gotten one, one quote. We're waiting for a couple more. So we had this on the agenda, thinking we'd have those quotes by that time. We didn't have them. So it's kind of the information item, but that's something we're looking at. It's the pond that you see, I know it says, it says action, but we don't have anything to act on.
From County 17.
It's the one on County 17, just, just east of, or west of the cemetery.
By the cemetery.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
So, so devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
You said erosion there. Where's it going?
Where's what, the erosion?
Yep.
In the bottom of the pond. And part of the, what we're looking at is getting that out of there.
Okay, that's what I was just going to ask. Are you going to try to?
From what I, from what I understand, yes, that they, they want to, Public Works has got a quote to take some of that erosion, or take whatever's in the bottom, and then fix it.
They will have to pump it, pump it completely.
No, you can, you can do it when it's wet. You can, you can get it out of there when it's, that one does get pretty low in the fall of the year. I think that's kind of why they were thinking this time of year would be best for it. And that one can be pumped up pretty low, but typically you don't have to take all the water out of it to do it. They have just clay bottoms anyways.
I just want to make sure it doesn't, you know, start with cattails and, because it's, you know, too low and turns into just a marsh.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That one's got pumps in it too.
Yeah, three of them.
Are, are they all working?
Yes, that's part of the problem.
Be a good time to test it, I guess.
They pump a lot of, the big one pumps a lot of water. It's like 6,000 GPM, so it moves a lot of water. And the ditch is only, can handle so much. So we are planning with Suncrest to address some of that drainage on County 17, because it pumps out of Southdale Farms, it goes north along County 17, then it cuts across South Alliance Park. And there's kind of a pinch point in there with existing lift station, pump station. So we're working with Suncrest to try to take, pull some of that water off, take some of the stress off of the ditch into the subdivision where there will be ponds and then feed it to that lift station, but not to derail, we're talking about Suncrest. That's.
Okay.
There's a master plan in, floating around that we're trying to implement.
Okay, questions for Jim?
No.
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 Okay, no action then, right, Jim?
No action on that one today.
Okay, number 10.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Waterstorm and, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District, 2022-9.
Yep, so, Mr. Mayor and council, what we have here is a certificate of substantial completion. This is a form that's between the contractor and the city indicating that the project was substantially complete on July 26, 2024. There were no amendments to the order. There were no, this is the contractor's responsibility. As typical, we have the punch list. This is for 63rd Street, for those of you who don't, who get lost in the Water Sewer Storm Street, yada, yada, yada. So 63rd Street has been open for a couple of weeks now. Actually, it's been open for, since the end of, end of July, so about the 26th of July. So there is some punch list items that are due remain, and the contractor does, does note that by their acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion, but now we start the clock on them getting those punch list items done.
Estimate completion?
Uh, da-dum-da-dum, let me see here. Usually it's two weeks after the certificate of substantial completion. It's the way that we, final completion is two weeks after. I'm just saying, contractually, that's what we typically do.
They said it was July 26th, it's now August 17th.
First substantial completion.
Right.
And the reason for this is there was a, a, there was a delay in getting it to the city council due to some clarifications about what the contractor's responsibility was. So.
You're saying by the end of the month?
I would say by the end of the month. Nothing out there is hindering any traffic or anything like that.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I did want to make an observation, not to derail this, but on one of the pictures, picture seven in this exhibit, you'll see a crosswalk.
Yeah.
And you see sidewalks going one direction, and then a second sidewalk coming off the multi-use path going the other direction. And in between it is this small little piece of grass that. that does nothing but get rutted up as people go around corners and become an absolute impossibility to mow. I know, because I just had one installed next to my house. I'm going to propose that moving forward, we get rid of those little triangles because it creates a muddy mess on that sidewalk for people that walk there, and it's a real pain in the ass to maintain.
Concrete.
Yes.
Yep.
Take, take the extra, you know, sixteenth of a yard and fill that in on all projects moving forward, because it is a nightmare, the amount of mud that I'm constantly out scraping as people take the turns too tight.
Makes sense to me.
That's the only observation I have.
Makes sense to me.
Make it a little easier for those of us that live on corners. And a little nicer for our pedestrians that want to walk on those paths, you know? That's all I've got. Otherwise, the rest of this looks good, I agree with the punch list I was out there this weekend. Um, I did pick up a little bit of trash, there was some trash out there and some leftover materials.
In the boulevards?
Yeah. So I want to make sure that's all taken care of. You okay, dear?
Yeah.
God bless you.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting over.
I know, I know. Poor Naomi's had COVID.
I'm not contagious anymore.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not.
I feel good, I just, I can't, I'm coughing.
No, the rest of it, I agree with, the punch list is, is fairly conclusive, and I appreciated the mention of washing the hydro mulch off because that stuff turns to concrete when it dries, and I didn't want it on.
Sure does.
The hydrants and the light poles, I want it to look nice, so thank you for that.
Any questions, comments?
Okay, what are we looking for as far as action, Jim?
Just a mo, uh, motion accepting the certificate of substantial completion.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Do I got a sec? You have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Number eleven.
All right, I'll give you a quick, quick run through of some of the projects. Um, we typically hit those the first meeting of the month, but we got time tonight, it looks like, so we'll go through a couple of them. So U-Betch Drive, uh, starting on the south, working our way to the north, U-Betch Drive, the underground is a day, within days of completion on that project. Um, their schedule has them doing concrete paving here within two, three weeks. So they seem to be on schedule with what they've provided us and on schedule with the completion date. Uh, that project, we're getting the street built, and then the plantings are going to come after that. The completion is next year on the plantings. So, um, I think that that one is, is moving along quite nicely. Wall Avenue West, I don't know if you noticed, was opened last Friday.
Yeah.
There's still some, um, punch list things that they have to do, but the, the, the road is open, uh, to traffic, so.
Has it been cleaned? Have we taken a street sweeper down there?
No, no, that one, they, they were pretty anxious to get it, to get it going, and then they've been doing some pipe televising, so there's some other stuff floating around, and, uh, Op was out today doing some cleanup work on the concrete. Last Friday, they were still doing some sawing and ceiling, or some sealing, they weren't sawing, just doing some touch up on some sealant and come out. So, so that one is, um, like I said, we haven't got a certificate of substantial completion yet, but they're actually had a schedule for that. That was to be open by the, um, middle to end of next month, so.
Can we make sure that we get a street sweeper or something down there to get all the gravel? There's a lot of gravel and stuff.
Yeah.
That accumulates on the sides of the roads and, you know, if people are out there walking and stuff, I don't want them dusted out from all the debris from the construction. If they could maybe make just a quick sweep down and back, that'd be great to get that all cleaned up and looking really nice. Um, are we fully striped down there?
Not the messages yet.
Okay.
The, uh. Quite a bit of it, so. The longitudinal lines are, the messages have to be put in yet.
Okay.
Crosswalks and that stuff.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, like I said, sixty-sixth street's open, um, sixty, well, I meant sixty-third street's open. Sixty-sixth street, substantial completion was Saturday. The only thing that they've got left on that is tipping up some poles. Joel was out there putting up poles today, and, um, that's really the last thing that they have to do.
They don't have feed point and they have concrete to replace.
So the, they do have, I'd agree there, that's part of the after the substantial.
What do you mean after the substantial? Feed point should be?
The feed point's not, but the concrete is, the concrete's a warranty item.
I can live with that, but the feed point, they don't get S E.
I don't know what, what Scott deals with that. Cass County Electric moved it now to Benji instead of sixty-sixth, so not sure where that all, how that's all shaking out just yet. Cause I followed up after our last meeting with where, where's the feed point at on Christensen? And at that point, I was told that Cass County Electric was switching it up to come out of Benji. Which, to really make you mad, would have worked last winter.
Yeah, would have, it would have.
So I wasn't really tickled when I heard that, that was their new plan after we had sat in the dark for almost a year, so.
No S E until we have a feed point.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I agree on that. So they're tipping up poles, uh, pavement markings are complete, minus, there's some stripes.
They have all the poles now finally?
Uh, as far as I could tell, yeah.
I haven't seen any laid out there.
Well, he's got, he's doing five at a time today.
There was, there was a bunch way up north, but there wasn't any down.
He started.
On the south end.
How far south?
Uh, just past Christensen. I saw the markers up there.
No, he went north, he went north out of there. No, they were there this morning, they're on the east, west side of the road.
Oh, I didn't go there this morning.
Yeah, they were up this morning.
It was last week that I was over there.
They, because they're on the west side up to Christensen, and then they switch over to the east, to go the rest of the way.
Then they've made some progress.
Yeah.
Maybe they hauled them in when I wasn't looking.
They were there on Friday when I went up there, they were just laying out on the ground, or on your, on their stands.
I'll check it out when I, on, on the little pedestals.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cause those were empty when I was there last.
Okay, yeah, no, they were there, cause they were flopping in the wind when I.
Good, I was screwing around on sixty-third this weekend, so that's good, thank you.
Yeah, uh, sixty-fifth, we talked about the de-watering pump on sixty-fifth avenue. Uh, their plan is within the next day or two to get done with the sanitary sewer, and they have to take the de-watering out, cause that's where the water main goes. So, um, that shouldn't be more than a, more than a week on that. Sixty-fourth Avenue, things are progressing, uh, pretty nicely, they've got two underground crews in there, they're out of the Deer Creek Estates away.
Yeah, they're going, they're rolling.
Yeah, so they started at sixty-eighth street, which is basically one, maybe three blocks, four blocks east of seventeen, and they got two crews, one going uphill both ways. So they're, they're making some good progress on that minus the rain. Master Construction's given a schedule on Deer Creek Estates, uh, they'll be starting here anytime, they've been sending in some mittles.
Really?
Meaning that. Yep, uh, Southdale Farms six, Dirt Dynamics have been receiving materials here the last couple of days, they got some precast manholes today that they've been, uh, spreading out and, and getting ready for that.
The whole thing looks great except for the southeast corner.
Southeast corner.
Why's that?
Noxious weeds.
Oh, okay. I, we'll give you that.
They, they can take that hill down anytime.
Yeah, it's in the works.
Good.
Uh, shared use path, Frontage Casey's is, was scheduled to start today, I haven't heard why they didn't start today yet. But that is going to be the next thing. Um, I did talk to the project manager of Wall Avenue East today to talk about pedestrian beacon. Crossing, uh, the pedestrian beacon crossing.
Oh.
At the frontage road. Um, he was going to reach out and see if he could get a schedule from them, knowing the school starts in two days.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, I knew that would come up tonight, so we, make sure we get that going. Um, Rivers Edge, knocking out quite a bit of that work. Uh, paving is done minus seventy-eighth, street seventy-eighth is the north-south arterial, that's where it's concrete. They started that today, and they'll be probably paving that, I believe it's the end of this week or the beginning of next. However, they have it set up to, set up to run, so, um, those are kind of the big ones that we're, we're dealing with.
Seventy-eighth, you said they're gonna hit, huh?
Seventy-eighth street, yep, and we're south one.
Okay.
Because they've got everything in the subdivision done except for seventy, and that's the line, allows you to get into the subdivision. So they, they need that one.
Good.
Yep, so. That's the rundown that I've got for you tonight.
Questions? Okay. Brendan?
Only one, only one I have is a reminder, North Dakota League City's annual conference registration. Uh, if you have not gotten back to me yet, please let me know as soon as possible. Uh, we do have room blocks, uh, taken care of, just, you know, just in case we're needed, so we need to cancel them if you can't attend. So, uh, but Matt and I would like to get registrations knocked out. We have those that have informed us that they plan on attending, registered now, that I need to hear back from anybody else that hasn't let me know yet. So, uh, I believe that was September eighteenth and twentieth, eighteenth, eighteenth through the twentieth, I believe it was.
Yes.
And that's in Grand Forks, so it'd be the evening of the eighteenth, and extend into, typically it goes on the twentieth until about lunchtime or just after.
Like evening as in what time?
Um, I think it.
Welcome ceremony is at five o'clock, that is optional.
Yeah, really, the conference really starts that Thursday.
Okay.
So. That's all I got.
All right. So, uh, for mayor report, we don't have a lot this time, uh, we have a lot of meetings, um, a lot of meetings. Start to know why Cory, Cory always looks so exhausted, there's a lot of meetings that, uh, take place. Other than that, um, I, I don't even have a lot, I am going on vacation, uh, coming up later this week. Uh, Thursday and, uh, Tuesday next week, so if you need me, please still call, but, uh, just on my vacation. That's all I got, Sarah?
I think Jim covered the construction updates. Um, all of us had follow-up from a resident regarding a motion, uh, last week to install a gravel driveway to access the northern parcel of his property. Um, he had represented that his neighbors were all on board, and one of those neighbors was not. He and I have been in communication, I was over there over the weekend, and, um, he sent me some additional pictures and whatnot. So we'll probably have some additional discussion and determine if that needs to come back up on one of our agendas or if it can be handled internally through the permitting process. But, um, I, I think that we as a council need to, you know, I, I love to think that everyone that comes here is, is honest and forthcoming and, and not implying that anyone wasn't, I, I don't know if there was maybe a misunderstanding. But, um, one of the residents clearly was in opposition to that, and it was a, a source of concern. So, um, moving forward, I would like to make sure that when folks come up and represent that they've spoken to their neighbors, that they do what a, a, a previous resident had done when she came to us with the building and had a, a handful of signatures that said, hey, yes, I've talked to my neighbors and these are the people that agree. Um, because while I believe this gentleman's intention was good, uh, he maybe didn't understand the depth of the concern of his neighbor, which was reiterated to us, so. I just wanted to bring that forth and make sure that we're all on the same page. Does anyone else have any additional comments on that? Have I covered it?
I, I do a little bit, but I can wait till my portfolio, or I can piggyback off what you said.
By all means.
I was gonna stick it out, um, I was gonna mention it as well, and I appreciate that you reached out, um, to that residence. Um, and I just wanted to express, and we probably maybe all share, I think we should be a little, probably a little more mindful of the fact that we voted on something that wasn't on the agenda. And the documents that were, that were, um, explaining the situation were not included in the meeting packet that was published for the, for the public and the residents to see. It was in our packet, but not the public packet, so, so residents would have no idea that we were even, that we were even talking about that. And I think if we vote on items, they should be agenda items going forward. I mean, minus the little pop-ups, like I forgot and asked that a resident sent an email wanting dust control on the gravel road.
Right.
But for issues of this magnitude, um, I think we probably need to be more mindful.
I, I think we're all in agreement, and we're gonna take it as lessons learned.
Yeah.
Um, but one way or another, we need to make sure that that resident's concerns are heard and that they're addressed.
Absolutely.
And so I, I think we've made that known, and we've had some internal discussion, um, with the city and the staff, and so. I'm, I'm hopeful that that can be recognized and some things can be taken into consideration. I shouldn't say hopeful, we'll make sure. Okay. Um, other than that, I'm just really looking forward to Bean Days coming up. And I've been sending out little notices to everybody and, uh, curious, uh, where you need us. So as you guys get your planning done, please don't hesitate, reach out to us. Some of us always like to come help put up barricades for the parade, so keep us posted, that's all I got.
Do we have enough snow fence?
Right.
After, uh, seeing what the, uh, fire wanted us to do, we've got enough snow fence.
Snow fence for where?
We'll see.
Quarantining everything off, so, fair enough, just throwing that out there.
They want to quarantine off their, their parking?
That is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We will see.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize that. Okay. I got nothing for my portfolio, if it's my turn.
Yep. Okay. Stephanie?
I have, I'm not gonna steal Rachel's thunder on Bean Days, I'll let her give that update. Um, I've been attending MetroCog meetings, which are my new portfolio, I'm just kind of getting, I'm involved in that. And then, um, I apologize, I didn't bring this up during public comment, so if you don't want to discuss it tonight, but there was that residence that I sent the email about, that was just having some concerns over by Lakeview about sprinklers. Um, and I see that Jim responded to me, and I don't know, I mean, I thought maybe you might know, Jim, I saw you send you the email.
First I heard of it was.
Okay, if the sprinklers are, would, would there be city sprinklers on this?
No.
I'm, I'm not aware of this, what is it?
This was just a resident that reached out over by Lakeview, um, he was, uh, an individual that had concerns about weight control. And he also said that there is a sprinkler system along the public sidewalk in Lakeview. They may be a private, and it's flooding out, it's flooding out the sidewalk, um, I can send a picture to everybody.
Oh, flooding the sidewalk.
Because I just think it's maybe overused, but it feels a little, what it reminded me of, it's not the same, but it's all reminiscent maybe of the sidewalk around, uh, the, the drainage pond in, um, Lost River, so should we? I, I sent it to, uh, Jason, Jim and Jeff maybe to see what, if anything, how we proceed with that. Do you think they're private sprinklers?
I reached out to the, the property owner on that too, just because of the picture, and here, I'll separate this from my email. Maybe.
I apologize, he just sent it, uh, very recently, otherwise I would have forwarded it all to you.
Okay.
Sorry.
What part of Lakeview?
It's along the Bablin Brook on the back side.
It's on the south side of the Bablin.
On the back side of the Bablin Brook, okay. That's, okay, that's down there, that's past the high school.
Looks like it's, it's St., St.
Along St. Anne's, yeah.
St. Anne's.
St. Anne's.
St. Anne's.
Yeah, I should have, uh, like I said, I just started for the meeting, and so I just forwarded it on, I didn't have to worry.
You're good.
No, I, I reached out to him this afternoon to figure out, cause when I do pull this picture up, if it.
Can you share the picture so we can see it?
Yep, working on getting it sent over there, and this is probably not gonna.
Whoa.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of water.
So.
Sidewalk's underwater.
Yeah, it's a lot of water.
Looks like some could be coming from here, but in areas that it's filled, so I, I did ask him if it was coming from this side or that side, and he had, had mentioned that it's probably a little bit of a hole, so we'll have to look in to see.
Oh, that's by the bollards, that's by the wide sidewalk that goes through there.
It's the shared use.
The shared use path.
So that little spot between, my non-engineering terms, the, the grassy area between the sidewalk and the Bablin Brook, who owns that?
City.
The city does.
The city does, would we have sprinklers in there? I guess I don't know.
Stranger things have happened.
I mean, we'd know if we had sprinklers in there.
Right.
That's why I say stranger things have happened.
It must be coming from the property.
My guess is it's coming from the property.
The property side.
So.
Okay.
Lost River was, was built with sprinklers in areas that are public, and from what I gather, they were turned on after a couple of years because of the cost.
You mean like an H O A lot or an? Okay. Anyway, yeah, so that was the picture he sent, which is too bad because it really, well, obviously it's an issue.
It sounds like there's some sprinkler heads that are sitting right on the back of these properties directly adjacent to that, so we'll have to.
Those tend to like just bubble, they don't spray, they just like ooze water, so.
So what can we even do?
If they aren't spraying, I'm guessing we could say that they need to be fixed, but this is what we ran into in multiple areas of these houses get built with sod and irrigation, and in order to keep the sod going, you have to water, water it a lot, and we saw the same thing, like you said, Lost River.
Yeah, it just makes.
Where does the excess water go?
Runs right across.
It, and that, it kind of works itself out to some degree, once the sod takes, then they're able to tone down.
It does look like the sod is established, well, the, the one lot, it looks like it may not be, but the one here looks like it's established. And then there's, it looks like maybe an undeveloped or under cared for lot, and then the next lot over looks like it's habitated. So, I don't know, we're, we're gonna have to go look at that.
Yeah.
Cause that's.
Sorry to put another thing on your, uh, list there, Sarah.
Oh, it's okay, I, that's all I do. Oh, it's okay, I, that's all I do. You'll see me all the time driving around the city, it's crazy.
Is it all water or is there some mud on the sidewalk too?
Oh, yeah, there'll be sediment and everything else on there. And it makes it really difficult for pedestrians who are going out with their kids and strollers. I mean, it just mucks everything up.
It's a long section.
Yeah, we want to get that cleaned up. That's a hazard right there. Somebody could fall, I mean, it could be bad, so. Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's all that I had and I'll forward it to you too, Sarah. I had sent it to Jim and Jason, Jeff when I saw it.
Awesome, appreciate it.
That's all I have for this.
Well, I think you should talk about Bean Days, I haven't, I think you were at a meeting, I wasn't, I don't know.
Yep, we had the last planning meeting. I'm going to need to really turn it over to Paul, but we're, we're in the hold stretch, obviously. September 6th and 7th, I've been, been working hard. I think it's gonna be a great couple of days. It was a great, on the Horse Facebook page, you got a lot of advertising up for that, so do you have anything else, Paul?
Oh, no, we started a 28-day intensive marketing campaign. It started last week.
Oh.
With most of the events listed, I'm rolling them out instead of doing it all at once. Cut down on some of the, to differentiate between the city page and Horse Bean Days page, we did create an event page just for Horse Bean Days. So that's up and running. We've already doubled the vendors we had from last summer.
Oh, great, good.
Car show now, thank you for your help with that. Car show registrations are rolling in, people seem really excited.
How about the parade?
Parade's going well too. Lots of community outreach, which is great. We typically get a lot from outside and surrounding areas, but most of our businesses that are, that are interactive, they're involved and so we're excited about that. And then near this year is the 5K and the one mile round, I'm really excited about that. That's something that I think every city should have, so run like that. So we're gonna, we're gonna tie that in with the Horse Veterans initiatives that we're undertaking. So proceeds from the runs will benefit a, a network organization called Vet Sports, which provides sporting opportunities for vets in our area. Again, Jason and I are working to help us tie that in with our newly formed Andy Care's committee, which is meeting later this week, so a lot of nice things piecing together, so it's gonna be a good weekend.
That's awesome. I was gonna follow up and I didn't mention it on the North Dakota Cares thing, but if you're meeting this week, I'll wait.
Yes.
Awesome, excited.
And then, and then is there the golf tournament too this year?
We also have a golf tournament.
At Leonard Country Club on Sunday.
And then we did move the parade to 10:00 AM this year instead of this afternoon. And so because of that, the Horse Lions and City Horse decided to move Pancake Feed to Sunday, so it'll be Sunday 9 to 12. Instead of typically, or sorry, it's Sunday 9 to 12:30 instead of 9 to 12:30 on Saturday, like it has been the past year, so. There's also Bingo going on, Dog Show, movie in the park. I did, we do Friday after five in the schedule, so I'll make sure you guys will get that too, you can share it as well, so lots of stuff.
Yay. It'll be, it'll be a great weekend.
Yeah, it's gonna be awesome.
Super excited.
Now we're just watching the weather forecast.
It does seem like it always rains on Bean Days.
Last year it didn't. We're starting a new streak.
And then I think Brett and I got a punch list earlier today. We will forward that on to from some, some of the other people involved, so. Make sure you take a look at that and get on that. Thank you very much.
Yep, and then we'll be briefing, I'd like to brief Cass County Sheriff's Office about two weeks out from our events. Security to help the, uh, finalize maps and everything.
Perfect, thanks Paul.
Thank you. Alright, that's it. I'll look for, you are done.
Yeah, I'm done.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Have a good day, guys.